Um, calling in from Egypt. And um, yeah, my name is Brianna Jackson. I'm an Egyptologist. I specialize in the Amarna period and international relations, but also ArcheoGaming. Um, and specifically, I look at the representation of urbanization and early state development um, and power systems in city builder games.
Andrew?
Uh, hello, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yeah, all right, great. Uh, my name is Andrew Reinhard. And uh, I uh, gave ArcheoGaming its name. The uh, there are lots of people who are doing video game archaeology before I was, and I guess I was good at marketing or something and came up with ArcheoGaming itself. Um, if you haven't checked it out yet, you can read the introduction to ArcheoGaming for 2018, and also, um, there's a sequel that came out this year, Practical ArcheoGaming, which speaks to, uh, thank you, uh, which, which speaks to my interest, um, in basically applying archaeological method and theory to understanding human occupation modification and abandonment of digital space, uh, which also leads into the second book for 2024, which is Machine-Created Culture. Uh, not so much about ArcheoGaming, but a lot about digital archaeology. And when I say digital archaeology, I mean archaeology of digital things and digital places. Um, and you might also know me from the Atari excavation back in 2014.
Thank you, Adam.
Hi, everyone. My name's Adam Bierstedt. Uh, I am a museum curator as my day job, but uh, in terms of ArcheoGaming stuff, uh, I am a Twitch streamer. Uh, I go under the handle LudoHistory uh, on pretty much all platforms and I, basically, I try and play a huge variety of games. My background is medieval studies and specifically medieval Scandinavian studies. So Assassin's Creed Valhalla is kind of where I made a name for myself, question mark. Um, but uh, at this point, I have played pretty much all time periods. I'm also a little bit of an imposter in this session, uh, because I don't conceptualize myself as doing ArcheoGaming per se. Uh, sometimes I do, but for the most part, I tend to work within uh, historical and museological frameworks in approaching games set in the past. So a little bit, I guess, of a uh, counterpoint to some of the other perspectives we see going on here.
Thank you so much. Hamish?
Uh, fingers crossed this is working?
Yes.
Good, okay. I was getting an error message before and I was like, oh no. So hi, everybody. I'm Hamish Cameron. I'm a senior lecturer in classics at Victoria University in Wellington and down in New Zealand. So it was great to hear the previous, uh, the end of the previous, uh, paper, actually, and hear, hear John talking about Taylor Swift. That was cool. Um, I work on Roman, uh, oh, okay, so it's the morning. So my brain is still catching up. My coffee isn't quite here yet. I work on the Roman Near East. I work on Roman representations of imperialism, and I work on the representation of the ancient world in games. Um, I also don't necessarily consider myself an ArcheoGamer, but ArcheoGaming, as anyone who's read Andrew's book will know, is an extremely broad tent, and I'm definitely in there. Uh, but I'm also coming at it from a more historical reception perspective, rather than necessarily a kind of material perspective, but we can talk about that later.
And Kate?
Hi, uh, I'm Kate Cook. Uh, I specialize in narratives about gender in the ancient world, um, in two areas. One of them is Greek tragedy, so that's my kind of ancient side, and the other is in uh, classical video games, as I'm going to insist on calling them for today, although that term is, I know, open for discussion. Um, I would say, I mean, I also would not necessarily consider myself a kind of ArcheoGaming person, because I come at this very much from a sort of literary place. So I think we've got a nice range of all the different ways of thinking about this between us, um, and maybe that's something we could think about a bit more.
Yes, and I am Julie Levy. I uh, am the managing director of SASA and your host for this lovely talk. I will be moderating, as I mentioned before. If you are not on our panel of experts, we're gonna have a few discussions just among us. If you could leave your camera off for that time, and then I'm gonna open up the discussion to everybody who is here. So thank you very much for your participation. Uh, as for me, I do consider myself an ArcheoGamer. I have a, a YouTube channel where I talk about, um, among other things, a lot of the sort of reception in video and board gaming. Um, and I also have a Twitch channel, much like Adam, where I play video games and talk about their ancient studies content. So uh, I think this is going to be a lot of fun. And the first question that I'd really like to start us off with, as, as everybody seems to be already there, is what is ArcheoGaming? How are we gonna define this for purposes of this conversation? Um, and I think this is especially fun since we have Andrew here, the coiner of the term, as it were.
Um, I, I guess I'll start. Uh, I, I, a short, very short definition. Uh, ArcheoGaming is the uh, archaeological or the study of the archaeology in and of video games, full stop. So as Hamish was saying, it's a very broad tent. I wanted to make it as as inclusive as possible for anybody who wants to study the archaeology of video games or archaeology within video games, to take their own interpretation and bring it to the fore. Um, as far as how I define it for myself, as I said earlier, it's more about, for me, um, conducting archaeological investigation in digital space and seeing how humans adapt to that space and make it their own, and what evidence do they leave behind?
Yeah, I, I, I love that. I wanna pick up on that, because to me, it comes as two very different things, right? You, since your definition talks about, you know, in and of, uh, the in is super interesting, because with any game, you can do effectively an excavation within the world of the game, right? Taking the game as a space, you can do uh, investigations of, you know, things that previously were called like environmental storytelling, uh, epigraphy, signage, ruins, et cetera, all within the context of the game world. You can also take the game as a whole as like a singular site, and so that's where you might get things like data mining, uh, looking at coding restrictions, uh, modding scenes, uh, could incorporate with this if you wanna deal with like a more social archaeological thing. Um, but you're gonna be using more technical perspectives rather than taking the game's world as a world. The game as a whole, as a layer of codebase, is, becomes something that you can investigate and dig through.
Yeah, I'll go next. Um, for me, I guess it's a bit on the nose. I, I look at specifically ancient Egypt, sometimes Mesopotamia where I can. There's not a lot of games about Mesopotamia, um, and how it's represented in games. And so, you know, there's that, that quality of ArcheoGaming where it's, you know, quite literally ancient past, studying the ancient past in games. Um, but also, uh, just to jump on what, um, uh, Andrew and Adam were saying, um, there, there's, it's, it's, it's huge. It's a huge term. And um, you can apply it to games that aren't even necessarily specifically about archaeology. Um, you, you can kind of, I don't wanna say you can kind of fudge it, but you, you, you can find ways in which um, archaeology is used in games. Um, for instance, I did a project, not to plug myself, but I'll plug myself anyway. I did a, a talk on my favorite video game series, Myst, and how they use archaeological methods to uh, build lore in the game. So that was, that was a lot of fun for me, because, you know, growing up playing that, finally got to work it into my career. Um, so I mean, I just think it's, if you can be, i- i- it's, ArcheoGaming can go as far as how creative you are to define it.
So as a historian, um, one of the things that I think about when I think about ArcheoGaming is as a kind of motivation maybe, or a, an urging, or a, uh, encouragement to focus on material aspects of the past that we see in games. Um, and often when some, when you're coming from a position like maybe Kataria, where we are sort of more literary as our primary focus, um, sometimes it's really useful to remember, like, to have like a label of ArcheoGaming or something like that that reminds you, wait, what are the, what are the material aspects here? Which is something that's never really far from the way I think about the past anyway, because I tend to work on, you know, provinces of the empire where material culture is a far more important part of the historical record. Uh, but that encouragement to focus on the material or to remember and to bring in the material and to, to think about that and how that's represented uh, is often something that I think about when I think about ArcheoGaming.
Yeah, I would say me too. So I think it's quite striking that, you know, Hamish said probably we're gonna be thinking the same way in this regard, but, but for me, actually even more so, because I, as, as somebody who specializes in Greek drama, archaeology in my kind of classical life is such a small part of what I do, just because of the way I read Greek drama. For many people, it should be more important. We should be thinking about contexts of theaters and so on. But that's not the kind of work I do. I'm very focused on kind of the language and the things created by the language in Greek drama, and archaeology is just not part of that for me. So it's interesting that then it kind of, and I wonder, I've sort of wanted to throw this open a little bit. I wonder if as classicists and ancient historians, and I sort of deliberately use the two separate labels there, and archaeologists, the way we've set up our field invites us to think about ArcheoGaming as something slightly more narrow than we might do in other fields. And the reason I sort of wonder about this is because I've recently been um, hanging out a lot with the medievalists, um, to think about how they do kind of, you know, historical game studies and so on. And for them, all of it is medieval studies. They really do not distinguish between literary work and history work and kind of material culture work, the way we often do and the way we've sort of siloed our discipline. And so for us, for some of us, ArcheoGaming feels like, like archaeology, and I can say, oh, I don't do archaeology. But for them, that would not make any sense as a kind of a distinction. So I wonder whether coming at this from the kind of ancient perspective is giving us some sort of uh, potential limits on the way that some of us, even if it's not necessarily the way that Andrew conceptualized this, it's the way that some of us are kind of coming to it later as being more particular than it might have been, you know, were we not coming from this kind of classics field setup?
Well, I wonder what Adam might have to say about that as.
As, as the medievalist in the room?
Yes.
Yeah. Um, gosh, I mean, right, I think you're absolutely right, but, you know, the amazing folks who organize the Middle Ages and Modern Games panels uh, really take the broadest possible definition, where if it is really interacting with the medieval world and games, through any convoluted string of things, that's fair game. That is all the same umbrella. Uh, I think sometimes I feel like that can be a little bit too broad, like they, the medievalists may be overcorrect. Uh, where, you know, our work is always so interdisciplinary just by necessity, uh, that it's really hard to, uh, I guess, that's sort of the natural way we think about things. Um, at the same time, I think a little bit more clarity between different like methodologies within the field actually is theoretically and very practically useful. So, so, some happy medium maybe where we try and go for. Cause yeah, I mean, I think you picked up, Hamish and Kate, you both picked up something really awesome with talking about, you know, the material culture that display. Because that's how so many games market themselves as authentic or as historical, is that they are displaying real artifacts in a plausible context of use. And if the plot makes no sense whatsoever, that's, that's whatever, that's, doesn't disqualify you. So I think picking up that material aspect is at least right, a really promising through line to help make it ArcheoGaming a usefully narrow term, while still being a little bit more interdisciplinary than uh, what kind of traditional academic field boundaries tend to create.
I don't know if any of our other more material side scholars want to pitch in here. I.
Oh, I don't know. Uh, go, go ahead.
Oh, I was just going to say, as, as someone who uh, has never quite understood why I need to be one or the other, but has wound up not so much digging in the dirt as in the, as in the uh, papyri, I am, I am fascinated by specifically in the, in the more ancient studies, the, the further back you go, the deeper this divide seems to be. Um, and so as ArcheoGamers, are we necessarily then trying to pull everything together under this big tent as, as, as we go? I, I'm, I'm not sure. I'm, I'm very interested in seeing what happens with it.
Um, I, I was thinking about this this morning, uh, when I was preparing for the panel. And I was thinking that ArcheoGaming is more of a lens within the broader context of digital humanities, um, media studies, game studies and the like. So, you know, I happen to be taking an archaeological approach to how I try to understand games and uh, humanities relationship with interactive digital entertainment. And, you know, it's an archaeological approach, and that's fine, and that falls under digital humanities. So it could be that we are, we're just this part of, of something over here, uh, which explains perhaps why we don't necessarily find an easy home in an archaeology department or a classics department or a history department, because, you know, even though we're doing that kind of thing, there's not really a, a space yet carved out for taking that kind of uh, uh, digital interpretation of classical studies or archaeology.
Yeah, I mean, I'm sorry, I just, just.
Please go ahead, please go ahead.
Uh, yeah, I think, you know, we could very well see this as sort of almost like a kind of, uh, yes, a lens, almost, you know, a subset or a methodology within a sort of broader field. Uh, digital humanities is a very broad field. Um, and I mean, to some extent, you could say, well then, maybe historical gaming studies or historical game studies is the kind of the bigger field, although then again, as, as a kind of a literature specialist, sometimes in my other life, then I get a bit uncomfortable about saying, well, where does, where does mythology fit in that? Cause I mean, I, you know, it's the sort of the stuff side of things, the material culture side of things is not what I look at in games either, really. And I, I sometimes look at historical games, but sometimes don't. I'm perfectly happy looking at, you know, classical games. That's why I like this label, because I think so we could, yes, we could be a subsection of, of digital humanities, but that covers so many different things that I wonder if, if we have got any in-between. Can we, can we go smaller than, than digital humanities, but bigger than ArcheoGaming, or, or should ArcheoGaming be kind of the bigger label and enable non-archaeological study to fit inside it, even though it sounds like archaeology?
Yeah, I was wondering, no, please go ahead.
Sorry. I kinda like being in a liminal space with fuzzy boundaries, actually. Uh, like it, it gives you a lot of space for kind of creativity and, and weirdness, and also as somebody who works on boundaries, they're all fake anyway, so we make them where we want to make them.
Here, here. Um.
Um, can I jump in here? And one thing that I think we, we have a problem with is in certain fields, anyway, um, this kind of thing is frowned upon, it's seen as not serious scholarship. So we have this stigma that we're also fighting. Um, don't wanna necessarily call out Egyptology, but this is a very, um, I, I criticize it a lot, that it's, it's very stuck in the nineteen twenties, and there's this kind of fear of moving outside of what we're comfortable with. And so it, it's really hard to be able to, to put um, ArcheoGaming that relates to ancient Egypt or even classics into an archaeology, um, uh, department, or even art history, or whatever department you're trying to fit your, your, um, your particular subject into, because, you know, there aren't very many Egyptology, um, departments out there, and sometimes you have to find things inside anthropology or art history and, and all of this nonsense. Um, and so, you know, it's, it's, where, where do we fit? Where does the administration let us fit? Where do departments let us fit? And those are, you know, major problems that, that I think, um, we need to, I don't know, hopefully, hopefully this can get fixed in the, in the near future, but uh, right now, it's, it's just a struggle to, to fit in.
Oh, uh, I, I think, uh, if we speak to our departments and chairs and beams and such, and demonstrate that potentially this is a cash cow, um, where students play video games, they're interested in pop culture, as we saw with the previous speaker, um, that we can have initial seminars or two hundred or three hundred level classes that will generate revenue, because you're filling seats first, and that's kind of a cynical view, but it gets a foot in the door. Um, and then secondly, if you can demonstrate the worth of using, you know, gaming tools in creating um, things of worth for Egyptology or classics or archaeology, you know, so if I'm using Unity to build models, you know, that's a gaming engine, and, you know, we can demonstrate this, and there are other people like Colleen Morgan who have done this for like Chatel Huygens and such. Um, and you could take that and kind of run with it as well. Um, I think there's, there's a pro. But uh,
Yeah, uh, one thing I'm actually really interested in here is um, almost turning that question around the other direction, right? Because as SASA, our whole goal is to break down the, the, the false barrier between the public and the academic, right? Um, we want ArcheoGaming to reach out into the public, to be accessible to students, but also to everyone. And uh, you know, Andrew, I don't, I hope you don't mind me mentioning that SASA is going to be taking, uh, taking over archeogaming.com, and we are actually looking for ways to use that space to connect this sort of academic discussion with public interest. So I wonder if y'all have ideas about, well, if anybody here has ideas, we'd be very happy to have them about what you would wanna see there. What kind of things can we do in terms of public engagement with the past through ArcheoGaming?
Um, to pick up on something Andrew said very briefly, is this a great time to mention that Fortnite has both a museum and a simulation of the Pyramids of Giza in it?
Oh man, did, well, did you play, I guess last season, la- last season or two seasons ago, um, they had Indiana Jones as a, as a skin, and they had adventures in Fortnite. I, I used to play under, I used to Twitch stream under Boring Fortnite, where I basically sit in the bush and complain for an hour. But uh, but yeah, um, I, I love the fact that there's this kind of intersection with antiquity and pop culture and archaeology and classics and such, you know, and, and a game such as, as wild as Fortnite. And uh, I've done archaeology in Fortnite also. Um, if you wanna read the article, I can send you something.
Yeah, that's really, that's really fun. And it, you know, it is really lovely to see the very faithful recreations of, of artifacts and places in something like Assassin's Creed. But it's also just fun to see people building the entire Parthenon in Minecraft for no reason at all, right? Like, the public engagement with this material is, is infinitely open. Um, we've got a comment here about, you know, even just the simplest uh, mechanism to engage with the past is really engaging, because like even Animal Crossing, you dig up little fossils, right? You connect to that sense of past, to that sense of history. Um, I think if nobody objects, this is a great place to open everybody up for public discussion. So if folks have questions, um, or you wanna start turning on your camera and, and joining in the discussion, this is a great moment for that. Yes, William?
Hi, um, this is kind of the first introduction I've really had to ArcheoGaming, honestly. Uh, it's something I'm interested in, but don't know that much about. And I was just wondering uh, if any of you could talk about how it is like practically applied in the classroom and uh, some of the maybe limitations, uh, that come with maybe people not having access to consoles, like not having the funding, like where is it at in that process at the moment?
Well, I wanna start actually by plugging SASA's ArcheoGaming education modules, actually, um, which are a really good reflection on this question. Anybody with availability of a computer, uh, or projector should be able to access those. So um, to some extent, we can turn archaeology into something that is more accessible, that doesn't have the, ArcheoGaming into something that is more accessible and doesn't have those boundaries. And that's also perhaps something we would be doing with archeogaming.com, which will be a public-facing and free website. Um, but in terms of other use in the classrooms, I know that it can be a bit of an issue, so I don't know if y'all have had experience with this in particular.
Yeah, uh, I, I helped with a class that Jill Barkey ran, using, trying to do an intro seminar to medieval history using games, and uh, I gave in, uh, and did a sort of uh, methodology-focused lecture on that. Access is a big issue. Uh, having machines that can consistently run stuff is still a big issue, even for older games, even for uh, current generation college students who have grown up around technology. Having access to a machine that can consistently run games continues to be a big challenge, and it's one that, uh, on an administrative side seems to be uh, very difficult. So that's why something I've been experimenting with, of course, with doing live streams for oh, over four years at this point, oh boy, uh, is, you know, having a body of things that almost any machine will be able to look, get that perspective on, uh, and then hopefully, uh, take my time enough and play intentionally badly enough that people can see and pull things other than what I pulled out, out of it, uh, from that as well.
So I've taught with games, um, many times, including a course that I've run a couple of times now, uh, on the ancient world and video games, basically. Uh, and the way I do it, because all of these issues about uh, accessibility, be that the cost of consoles, the cost of games themselves, especially if you wanna cover a whole lot of games over a semester, like that's a lot of money to put on a student. Uh, so the way I handle it is I, for every game that I present in the class, offer them a lot of streaming options, including uh, or a lot of, a lot of recorded streams, or Let's Plays, uh, or other things like that. And so I give them the option to either like play the game or to watch the game. But the thing that I stress at the start of the course is that the way that you engage with the game will determine the kinds of arguments you can make about the game. If you are not playing a game, then there's some arguments you just can't make about the way the game plays, right? Cause you can't experience it, you haven't felt it, you, you're not really qualified to engage with that. And from a classics perspective, it's very similar to the type of uh, discussion I'll have with students about whether they know the original languages or not. There's certain arguments you can make about a text if you know Greek or Latin. Uh, there's arguments you can't make about a text if you're just working from a translation, and that's somewhat similar. And I do think that even if a student doesn't play a single game in the entire class and just watches some streams, watches gameplay, thinks about what they see, they can still get a lot and they can still write really compelling, essays do really compelling work on what they are observing and seeing from the games, uh, even without having to engage with the extra potential monetary cost. I mean, hopefully, one day down the line, I'll be able to get some sort of situation together where the students can play the games in my class, but at the moment, that's not really an option. Um, and so that's the way I deal with it, and I think it works pretty well.
Yeah, I have a similar experience to Hamish again. I mean, I've recently, actually, I, I, I taught this as part of a methodological question recently, which was quite interesting. So I, I ran a couple of sessions on um, kind of as a new field of classical reception within a broader classical receptions module, um, reception in video games. And one of the things we talked about was, you know, they didn't play the, most of them. Some of them were playing the games separately themselves anyway, so that was fine. They could bring that experience to class. But mostly, they were just given a lot of videos, and one of the things we talked about was, did this work for them methodologically as a way of, of studying this material and kind of what were the problems of it? And, and cost is one issue, but I'd also like to raise time, actually, is a really kind of a significant and different aspect to researching video games, which I, I'm not sure we always talk, I mean, we all talk about it, you know, when we're grumbling at, at conferences and so on. But, uh, you know, Assassin's Creed games take ninety-odd hours to complete. Even if you don't play it, if you watch someone else play it, you can't ask a student to contribute ninety hours to one primary text. Nothing else they're doing on a module is ever gonna take them that long. So then you're saying, well, okay, so watch this, you know, five minutes or half an hour or whatever, but are they really getting a sense of a whole story or a whole game or a whole representation of a character in that way? Often, they're not. And this is something which quite a lot of my students kind of brought up, that, you know, in the videos they watched, they got a kind of ten-minute sample, but they didn't know if that was kind of representative, and they, you know. And I think this is one of the places where kind of institutional support actually could help, because I think, you know, I mean, Andrew was kind of very positive about the idea that we can sell this to our departments, but I, being slightly more cynical, I would agree with, with Brianna, that I'm not sure a lot of our departments yet are ready to take that sale. But if, you know, if they were, and they would produce things like, you know, computer departments or computer rooms where we could make games accessible and we could allow students more time, we could think about scheduling modules and say, well, you know, it, next semester, we are gonna do this, so you've got three months to play as much games as you like. You know, it would be quite radically different to the ways that we practically think about teaching classics and ancient history at the moment. I think that would make it kind of the best, you can do a lot with videos and so on, but to make it the best it can be, then we need to be thinking about this on a sort of slightly different way than I think maybe we have so far.
Yeah, um, we are, you know, dealing with an issue of privilege and access, certainly. Um, I might recommend um, going to the Internet Archive. And for the time being, they have a vast collection of digital games and ephemera tied to the context of digital games. Um, a lot of which are, some of which have classical themes, archaeological themes, historical themes. And, and they're free to play. Uh, and they're not emulators. You can actually go in and play them through the window. Um, or you can go and find Java emulators and whatnot for some of these older games. And so, you know, I, I think, you know, perhaps when we're, you know, talking about uh, you know, digital games in the classroom, maybe we're, we're thinking of contemporary games and whatnot. But there's, there's a really rich history going back to sixteen bit and eight bit games as well um, that are freely accessible and available online. So if you've got a good internet connection, you'll be able to play and, and comment. And thankfully, a lot of these games are a bit shorter um, than these hundred hour marathons that Ubisoft continues to give us.
I just want to take a moment to raise a comment that Kira made, that it might help the universities to, to contextualize this to, to understand uh, what, what we're trying to do to frame game streams as films. Because the universities are used to incorporating screenings into, into film classes. And that way we, we might get a little bit more leeway. Um, it's, we've talked a lot about um, disciplines and universities in some ways being stuck in the past when it comes to uh, exploring new venues of opportunity for things like Archeo Gaming, things that break boundaries, things that verge into pop culture. Um, that within especially disciplines that are, are considered more sort of traditional, right? Like archaeology, Egyptology, classics. And I, I would be very interested to see if reframing uh, really does help the university if they can just pretend that it's something else that they already do. Which, which often, you know, is, is kind of funny is how we can get away with, with introducing new things into people's general uh, sense of reality is say, oh, it's just like this thing you already know, except a little bit different.
I think what needs to happen is for the uh, um, the, the tenured faculty to get on board, to help make courses. Because I've only ever adjuncted and my courses were always chosen for me. And um, and you know, there's this particular curriculum that you have to do and you can kind of manipulate it to, to stuff in video game stuff, which I have done before. Um, but you, we, we need the support from the people who can actually do something. And um, you know, that, that's, that's where we have to sell it to first, so that they can hopefully help to, you know, create a course or something for, for people to, I mean, we just need the space, you know, and they're not, we have to have somebody give that to us.
Yeah, I was talking about the subject to my partner the other day and he goes, well, nobody has their PhD in Archeo Gaming.
Yeah, and I mean, it's, it's really worth saying that, that, you know, Brianna, that Brianna's point is really important actually, because in, in this field particularly, slightly less in history, but it's true of a lot of historians as well. I mean, a lot of the people doing this work at the moment, whether it's Archeo Gaming or kind of historical game studies or kind of classical game studies are not in permanent employment or are PhD students or kind of very relatively young scholars. And it's extremely difficult to have much impact on the field or kind of, you know, bring students in and so on. If, if you're changing jobs all the time or if you haven't got that kind of institutional support. Um, which, which is really important for thinking about where this field goes next. And, you know, we, we talk about public access and so on, and that is really brilliant. But if all the people who are doing this public access through gaming lose their jobs every summer, then this, this is not a sustainable model, you know, we can't keep thinking about bringing the public in when there's no one left to bring them into anymore. Um, I think so it is kind of worth, you know, just to, just to put a downer on this otherwise really positive conversation. I do think we need to have a little bit of a think about, you know, who is doing this work and who is supporting doing this work as well.
I'd just like to personally welcome Brianna's cat to the screen.
Hello.
Sorry, go ahead.
I, I, I left academia, right? I am the one in the room who is not an academic in any way, shape or form. I work in a museum these days. Um, so the point I think becomes even more uh, dire than you suggested, Kate. Cause some of the people who are still putting in the work, going to conferences, participating in some of these volumes leave permanently and they don't come back. And so how do you persuade, you know, uh, someone who's been a tenure professor for thirty-five years, doesn't really see the significance of games, actively encourages students to not pursue that for graduate research? To do that when there's also a completely collapsed job market and even the most grossly overqualified historians uh, are on the brink of walking away entirely because you can't get something remotely stable.
Yeah, similarly, having left academia um, to join SASSA, you know, as, as what I do now in my academic direction, right? This is the part of my life that I still get to have these, these discussions in, still get to enter, interact so much with my friends who are still in academia. Um, I, I feel like I should take a moment here to thank Hamish again for letting me participate in uh, in a panel earlier in the month where I got to talk about Archeo Board Gaming, right? Another boundary pushing, you know, even within the realm of Archeo Gaming, this doesn't get talked about as much as it might. Um, uh, some really amazing work that Jeremiah McCall is doing there on Board Gaming in the Classroom that does actually address some of those accessibility issues too. David, please go ahead.
Well, I'd like to say that you've all come to the right place. This is mainly the point of what SASSA is trying to do, is trying to come up with a, a combination, a way in which people who are both um, professionally academics, by that I mean, they get paid to teach classes in a permanent position. And often sometimes paid to do research along with that. And those who are paid to do other things to make their living, but um, also love to engage in these things and produce quality work. So that's what we're all looking um, to move towards. And I think also there are many ways of actually um, getting tenured faculty, as you would say, interested. I think, I don't think it's necessarily uh, aiming for the uh, the faculty members who are near retirement. I think is looking at the, the associate professor, the assistant professors who are going to uh, reach tenure in the near future. And a lot of them are um, you know, Gen Xers, some even Gen Zers. So like, there's a lot of room for people who are, would be really open to incorporating different ways in their classroom. Unless I also not forget that there's enormous emphasis on trying to create immersive classrooms. And so part of what we're trying to do is to best find ways for people to do that, to help them do that. And I think I'd love for all of you in some ways to collaborate with our work um, in the Archeo Gaming Education Modules and especially as we're upgrading them to the undergraduate level. And I know we're never going to do it the way everybody wants. The, the goal is to have a very usable, easy to use product that people will feel comfortable using and will get used and students will get engaged with. And there's so much room for other types of projects also. Anyway, that was my two cents. And I think my point is I feel very positive about things. I think that people are very open to new things when they start feeling comfortable about them.
Yeah, and I think, I think we need cultural investment in Archeo Gaming is what we need.
Well, I, I think we do. Um, and you, you know, we're talking about Archeo Gaming in the academy, but it certainly has a healthy life outside of it. Uh, one need only take a look at the YouTube channel of the Tarnished Archaeologist, uh, who does the archaeology of Elden Ring. Um, and that is utterly fabulous. And that actually made me pick up the game and start playing it two weeks ago. And now I've got like eighty hours. Because I need help.
Where does the time go?
Yeah, but it's, it's, it's so much fun. Um, and the fact that other people who are not academics um, or who, you know, might have gotten their, their bachelor's or something and then did something else, you know, they keep coming back to the archaeology of these kinds of games. Whether they're classical, classically themed or not, um, they see these as uh, elements of material culture that are worthy of study, that have a rich lore, some of which are invented and some of which the uh, the um, you know, the fans bring uh, to the games themselves uh, as well. And if you can kind of merge those two, you've got academic rigor along with this kind of popular reception um, of lore within games. I, I think that's a good way forward. And you can certainly build an audience and demonstrate to whoever needs to see it, how popular these things actually are.
Yeah, I, I think public, especially YouTube is definitely a much, much healthier space. Uh, Twitch, not live streaming, I think a little less so. I, a couple of years ago was very, very positive about it. These days, not as much of the, has not been the sort of growth uh, across the board that I was hoping to see. But YouTube is doing fantastically. And if uh, you're trying to get started, like that is the platform. Uh, I think that's probably the most successful, just because Let's Plays are already so, so established as a like legitimate genre there, that being able to do Let's Play, but you're an expert, is a like flourishing subgenre uh, with archaeology and with not archaeology, uh, musicians. I've been seeing a lot of music, like so and so professional musician breaks down video game music. I've seen like six new channels explode in the past year doing just that. So there's clearly an appetite across the board for that expertise. And so it's more of a question of how not if.
Right, uh, that we, I think we just need to, to have more people invested in the reaching out part because the interest is clearly there. Who doesn't, who doesn't love video games, right? And, and who doesn't love the ancient world? Um, but not too many people have, have thought about combining the two in any way. I love the idea of video game music folks coming on to talk about how do we make a music, yeah, a video game piece of music that sounds to us like the ancient world. What, what a fascinating thing to do. And certainly there are people out there, like, I don't know, you're Adam Neely types who might do such a thing, oh, I wanna one of, but there could be whole channels. This could be a field of scholarship. Um, and all of these, all of these great people out there doing this kind of public education. Uh, I just wanna do a little plug for SASSA's Port Ancient, where we do try to get partnerships with folks who are out there doing this kind of work, like Adam. Uh, and uh, and, and try and give people more access to see what's already there, to get your own ideas and go start one. So if, if you are interested in checking out a pretty broad ranging list of people already out there doing this work, do go check out our Port Ancient Partner List because we've got some really great folks on there.
I have a YouTube channel where I um, play video games about ancient Egypt. And uh, I think of course for me, there's a question of being able to actually have time to play them. But um, I mean, I, I, I'm not a popular channel, but I do find a um, a lot of really interesting comments of people saying that, oh, I was awake at three AM and I randomly typed in, uh, what does an archaeologist think about Assassin's Creed Origins? You know, so people are specifically looking for this. And uh, you know, I think that it's, it's really exciting to know that, that that's out there. And YouTube is a really, really good thing. Um, as Adam was saying, like this is probably one of the best platforms because people can actually just, you know, look and see what's there instead of waiting for a live stream that um, may or may not happen. And um, oh, I had another thing I was gonna say and I forgot.
Well, if you remember, feel free to pop back in.
Um, but I mean, yeah, it's, 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 it's really excellent to be able to, to be on there. People who, who are actively trying to find out what experts have to say about the games. And uh, so you know, that's rewarding and, and uh, I, I, I think it's a lot of fun too.
We do have a, a question from, from chat that is a little bit less focused on the Archeo part of the Archeo Gaming and more on the, the gaming in the classroom end. Um, so have, have any of you noted any particular advantages or disadvantages to using video games as a mode of teaching for students with learning disabilities or for neurodivergent students? I, I guess I can speak to this from my own experience as a neurodivergent student who is uh, absolutely thrilled with Archeo Gaming. This is absolutely one of the easiest ways to connect for somebody who has a hyper focus issue. Um, because video games speak so well to, for instance, the ADHD brain. Um, because you can get involved with it, you're not just necessarily watching it. So it definitely has some advantages in that direction. Well, I guess the disadvantages that I see would mainly be barriers to entry, um, time and money. I don't know if anyone has further comments on that particular thing.
Uh, yeah, I would agree. I think, I mean, I've had some success with particularly neurodivergent students who uh, maybe have found kind of more traditional materials that we've come across in the classroom, you know, lots of reading and so on. They've not necessarily found that as engaging, but they've found video games more engaging. I would say however, that kind of many of the problems we talked about, about kind of just basic level of accessibility here can get worse with students who need additional accessibility, um, I suppose, help or, you know, just additional access. Um, particularly if you're not playing, because many games now have kind of settings and so on that could be, that, so the game itself could be made more accessible. But if students aren't playing them, they're watching streams, it is quite rare to find, well, you know, we've been talking about these great videos and kind of historical streams and so on. But you know, historical streamers are not necessarily playing these games on the most accessible settings. They're playing on them with a view to something else. And so at the moment, I would say kind of, there's a need for awareness about what is in the resources you're setting and, and how accessible those are in themselves. You know, many of these things are not subtitled, for example, which is fair enough. Cause if you do it, you know, two hour YouTube video, we all know from experience of subtitling lectures during the pandemic, that subtitling these things takes hours as well as the recording. So a lot of them are not, you know, well subtitled. A lot of them won't necessarily have had the kind of uh, color blinded, color blind system turned on because that wasn't kind of applicable to the streamer and so on. So I, I mean, I, I, so far, I've been relatively lucky. I haven't come across any kind of major failures in terms of awareness of this. But I think a need to be aware that at the moment, that kind of extra level of resources is not quite there to support that. And so kind of you would need to be very clear on what your students in your classroom need and how to go about meeting those yourself. Because I'm not sure necessarily that everything you might want is going to be available automatically, which is, you know, it's not necessarily a disaster, but I, I think it's something to kind of, to have in your mind if you're about to embark on trying to teach some of this material.
Yeah, just to double down on that warning, right? I mean, great showers for the settings in the game, but double, doubling onto that, right? If someone has physical disabilities, say, uh, you know, hyper mobility, susceptibility to repetitive stress injury uh, or limited mobility in general, limited vision. Any of that stuff is going to be a massive barrier to entry for play, right? Direct play, if not only do they need to be able to have a system that runs the game, the game itself, and then a bonus peripheral that's designed to enable someone with limited mobility? Well, now we're talking minimum several hundred, more realistically, over a thousand dollars of expenses just to be able to take the class. So that's, that's unfortunately a case where the uh, access resources within uh, certainly universities, what I'm aware with access resource they have are not there yet, not at the point where that, that can happen. But hopefully, uh, I think from the beginning or as we're finally starting to see some inroads into persuading people that this is valuable at all. Uh, making sure we're having conversations on that access and making sure where possible, we're advocating for the access center to have that option is going to be. is going to be important to you. Because if we get people on board early, that becomes easier. If we fail, it becomes way, way, way harder.
Yeah. And just to kind of bring that back around to what we were discussing earlier with the, you know, potentially using videos where gameplay isn't available or potentially using like in a in a physical classroom, using a board game or a tabletop game that might have fewer barriers to entry might be a way to incorporate that kind of gaming. I'm I'm aware of a number of board games that can be played by people with limited vision, limited mobility, other things like that. And they can also be designed. Jeremiah McCall has a couple of projects specifically about designing board games in the ancient world. I'm sure there are others. There have been a few mentioned in chat, other people who are working on that angle of things. But there's also, you know, when we come to role playing, there's a whole world out there of you know, people who people like Hamish who are working on that angle. And and you already have even even years ago, there were pitches going around to Latin teachers of essentially a role play style Duolingo that you could put into a classroom, that you could get your kids in a in a lower, lower level classroom engaging in, well, okay, you are infiltrating a Roman town as a time traveler and you absolutely cannot let them know that you're a time traveler. So your Latin has to be perfect. How do you talk? Right? So so that kind of thing is is up there. It is around, but but like Adam was saying, the the more traditionally gamery games, the that style of gaming is much harder to incorporate because of all of the periphery, because of all of the way that game consoles are designed and and the cost as well, as we've mentioned a few times.
Board games and role playing games also come with their own different set of accessibility issues. Still around cost and still around time, especially the extra time it takes to like navigate a rulebook enough to be able to play it. Or like if if I want to try and incorporate like a role playing game into a classroom, I have to find role playing games that are GMless, of which there are many, but it cuts down the possibilities. Or I have to rely on people in the class having enough sort of confidence to GM a session. And then to know that what they're doing is going to be like linked into the to the class in some way, right? There's a whole lot of extra issues, which is not to say that people shouldn't do it, right? And there's lots of interesting ways to overcome these. But it's a it's not like a magic bullet for accessibility, unfortunately. But it is, it is like a different route that that people can take. And yeah, a bunch of people are taking, as people have mentioned in the chat as well.
Yeah, and a comment from Abby, the university disability resource centers sometimes have talk to text resources. And there are things that are available. You know, I I may not love the the added resource cost of AI, but one of its best uses, I think, is in providing increasingly good automatic subtitles for things. And so increasingly, it is possible to have those two, three hour video game streams with subtitles that are passable. I'm gonna go with passable. So so things are changing. And and like Adam said, if we push for it, if we push for it now, when we're starting to get these incorporated into how people see both antiquity and gaming and the academic side of those things. This is the time. This is the time to really take it. So to take it back to the ancient side of the question. You know, we've talked a lot about our particular interests in terms of classics versus Egyptology versus, you know, Vikings. And and Brianna, you mentioned that there aren't that many games about ancient Mesopotamia. So I want to kind of turn the question back to like, what cultures do we not see that often when we try to do Arceo gaming? You know, where where is, you know, where is the ancient Philippines in gaming? Do we have those? The answer is yes, but not very many.
So, yeah, you know, a lot of people actually have noticed these this lack of Mesopotamia in games. I know of two. And maybe you guys know of more. It's two city builder games. One is called Sumerians, which rocks. And the other one is called Nebuchadnezzar. Now, I know Total War Pharaoh has a new DLC that's going to focus on Assyria or Babylonia or somewhere in Mesopotamia, which, you know, finally. But I mean, I I have no idea why no one has touched Mesopotamia. I think maybe I I just, I don't know. It's it's really weird. And if you guys have any ideas why people haven't touched that, I'd love to know. Because it's just, it's so rich and exciting over there. And it's, you know, I mean, I think you can mine a lot out of there for for games.
Yeah, Dee MacGyver asks, has anyone made a game around the Mesopotamian ballgame? Which just for me brings to mind, like, how many games are there out there about like the the ancient the ancient civilizations over here in the Americas, which I know there are some, I know there are some, but I would love to see more.
Exactly. There's not very many. But this is, this is a trend, I think, the last 10 years have been like really promising for of indigenous or marginalized communities working with game companies to create games based in around their own identities. Never Alone from 2014, which has has a sequel coming out soon, apparently. That was not on my bingo card this year. But anyway, that was like the first one I'm aware of that really is like, yeah, this is by Inupiat people. This is about their culture. This is one of their stories poured into a game. Since then, there's been six or seven games I'm aware of that are all various indigenous communities, or there's one team that's working with consultants from the Canary Islands. So that's the demo just came out for that, based on Tenebrian folktales. Anyway, there's a whole bunch of these games are starting to come out. And it's just extremely, extremely cool. So Rivers or Trails is a fantastic shout out on that. A Song of Inua, A Tale of Something in Ice. Inua, I N U I, is the start of it. It's based on the Inuit folktales. There's one that saw me that came out not that long ago. So like, there's, there's a lot more of these games coming out right now. And so
What's that game called? Zao? I know you were playing.
Zao rules. That's Pan African, but a specific, especially Bantu speaking Swahili coast. That game rules. There, there's a story in Ice and Time. Thank you, Kira, for remembering names. So I don't have to. But yeah, there's a lot of really, really cool games representing that coming out right now. So this is, I expect we'll see more of that in the next five years or so.
Yeah, we've also got a question here about games set in ancient India. I mean, I don't, I guess it's not set in ancient India, but has a lot of of Indian history to it. The, oh, I started talking and I lost the name. It's a fighting game where you collect this huge army of people to work with you and your main character is essentially she's Kali. And it's, it's a gorgeous game.
Yeah, isn't isn't that Raji?
Raji? No, it's not that one, but I I don't know Raji. This was a Kickstarter game like maybe seven, eight years ago. But it was absolutely beautiful hand drawn animations. Kind of in the style of Ashante, but a little bit less risque.
I'm gonna do the terrible thing and just plug myself, except it's not just myself for a moment. But with all the people asking, it's, this is not a game, but it's it's going to be a book recommendation, because it's really interesting that people are saying, you know, they would really like to see games from covering the history of India, or they would like to see kind of games looking at history of indigenous peoples and something. And this was something which was actually really kind of at the forefront of our minds when myself, Rob Horton and Chris Kempschel got together to put together the Routledge Companion to History and Video Games. I keep telling our contributors, it's either video games and history or history and video games. And I cannot remember which one it's supposed to be. So everyone in this book who's got different titles, but never mind, Routledge will probably put one on rather than both. But hopefully that's going to be out in the next couple of years. And what we were really conscious of actually is that, I mean, Adam's right, there's a lot of kind of new great games coming out there, but I'm not necessarily sure that academia is always keeping up with that. There's sometimes a bit of a temptation for us to go, oh, you know, antiquity and video games, Greece and Rome, obviously not Brianna. And there are some fantastic Egyptologists kind of keeping the Egypt side alive for us. But, you know, there's not necessarily a great deal of attention to looking beyond that. And, you know, you say history and video games, and everyone goes, right, okay, medieval Europe or antiquity, or the First and Second World Wars, which is also kind of European, really. But at least in the game setting, often very European focused. So one of the things we really wanted to do in this companion was make sure that we were not neglecting kind of thinking about the history of India and the history of China and the history of kind of other regions and other peoples in this companion. So it's not going to be out for a couple of years. Well, I mean, in theory, it might be out by the end of 2025. So I should say, I guess that's a year and a half. Maybe it'll be 2026, hopefully the end of 2025. But keep an eye out for that, because that's going to hopefully be a way of bringing together some of these kind of less traditional approaches to thinking about history and video games and, you know, where is covered by history? That can hopefully be quite a good resource for us, because it's hard to keep track of, you know, I it's hard enough to keep track of our own fields without having to think, well, I also should know more about games set in India or engaging with Indian history, and I don't. But hopefully in a couple of years, this companion will be a useful resource to kind of point people to where they can go for a broader approach to history. That's certainly a part of our aim. So keep an eye out for it.
So assuming it survives the editorial process, my chapter in that book explicitly does cover the Near East as well as the Greco-Roman world. So like waving that Near Eastern flag. One thing I want to say about Mesopotamia is that I think things might be slightly better in the board gaming space, not much. I did a kind of survey for a talk I did a few years ago. And at that time, which is 2021, about 5% of the of the games about the ancient world were in set in Mesopotamia, which sort of made it like the fifth or sixth most biggest sort of one underneath the category of multiple, which is actually where I think Mesopotamia comes into it a lot. Like big strategy games, like Old World, which you wouldn't, is not about Mesopotamia, but you can play with Mesopotamian civilizations or civilization, that kind of place. So it's some of these areas that we're like, oh, we'd like to see a game about this. Well, there are games that have it, but they're not really focused on it. So it's a, it's something that maybe there's a little bit of the public's appetite for what they see in those areas is covered, but not to the extent that we as experts maybe would would like to see it. I would certainly love to see more games focused on Mesopotamia or ancient Iran, like as a main focus rather than as an adjunct to often the classical world.
Yeah, and there are there are certainly, so so first, Indivisible is definitely the name of the game that I was trying to think of. It's beautiful. Y'all should check it out. But but also, just there definitely are increasingly a broader range of historical settings in games and historical and mythological influence in games. Especially when it's somebody mashing a bunch together, but not always. So one thing I guess I I want to talk about here, just to to follow on Kate's self plug. The Arceo Gaming Live team at SASSA routinely looks for games that are outside of our normal set of expertise. So, you know, we we have played games that are set in I think, I think we played a game that was set in Micronesia. We played Scabma Snowfall, which which is Scythian. You know, we're looking, you know, there are plenty of of Japanese historical games and there are a few about China that I've heard of, but I I'm actually surprised I don't know more historical games about China, considering how huge the interest is. So so I guess I want to ask here, oh, yeah?
Oh, I I just, I just wanted to chime in real quick.
Yeah, please.
That the World Archaeological Congress is going to be in Australia next year. And they are doing an Arceo gaming session. So this is the perfect opportunity to get together with international colleagues who are not necessarily Anglophones, English speakers, play Western games and to partner up, co author, co present and learn from each other, because the the lot, the bigger our network internationally, the better. And that means like speaking at conferences like DigiR, for example. Florence Smith Nichols and Michael Cook did this, where you're talking, you're bringing archaeology to these other networks and creating these relationships with indie game developers, AAA developers, as well as others who are kind of occupying a similar space and intersecting with them. But yeah, Australia coming up, World Archaeological Congress, and there will be Arceo gaming there.
Awesome. Yeah, this this is actually a great moment. If if our other presenters have projects that they that they're excited about or conferences that are coming up that you want to talk about or more books coming out, what do you, what would you like to plug?
I don't have, I'm not going to plug something right now, but can I just say that every time Andrew opens his mouth and talks about something, I'm like, oh, that sounds interesting. Let me type that.
Very much same. Welcome. You have found your audience.
I I would suggest, especially once, maybe once we're a little later into building some of those networks, speak at PAXS. Right? There's three of them every single year. They're hugely well attended. If the goal is to get to meet people, I did one in 2020, oh, gosh, last year, 2023 at PAX East in Boston, which admittedly, I partnered with someone who's a much, much larger creator than I did. We filled one of the medium sized conference halls. Like full, full, so easily 250 people in there. So like, it does get people and that is a very accessible conference.
Was that overly sarcastic you were working with? Yeah, overly sarcastic productions. Great stuff. Great stuff. Find them on YouTube. I'm a little bit sorry. I didn't know that y'all were speaking there. I I might have made more of an effort to get a ticket. Sorry, was somebody starting up? Yes, please.
Things. So I've got a talk coming up at the the hell is it called? Current something in Egyptology, current research in Egyptology. There we go. We'll all be talking about representation and and purpose of hieroglyphs in games set in ancient Egypt. And we're relating to ancient Egypt. And also, there's a couple of books coming out and you know, when when Kate was talking about her upcoming book, I was very excited because there's a couple more that are coming out that have ancient themes. So there's one ancient Egypt in video games. Maybe the end of this year, maybe next year. And then there's another book coming out called oh, gosh, well, it's something about strategy games. Strategy and management games. And I've got a couple articles. So I got one in in each of those books. And I know that there's another scholar who focuses on Arceo gaming and he's got a an article in, I think, I think it might be about Pokemon. I can't remember what it's about. But anyway, he's got one coming up in that Strategy and Management Games book. So there's a lot of really great stuff coming out in terms of publications, not just mine, of course, but, you know, in general. And just, I'm I'm really excited about this, these series that are from Bloomsbury, De Groeter and Routledge. And so it's it's really exciting to see that there's actual series that are being put together, not just one offs. But you know, there's, there's just this exciting And so it's, it's really exciting to see that there's actual series that are being put together, not just one offs, but um, you know, there's, there's just this exciting uh, growth in, in academic interest in this. So it's, it's awesome. I'm looking forward to all of it.
We've got some comments. Uh, Abby Limer saying, I'm part of an, a group doing a poster at the National Council for Social Studies, which will focus on recommendations for middle school teachers on the ancient world for all areas. And uh, I believe SASSA will be there too. David, you know better than I would. Uh, but, but certainly we uh, we hope that there will be uh, some representation of Archaeo Gaming and particularly, you know, this, this idea of being able to bring either a video or, or some exercises about the ancient world from the Archaeo Gaming side into the classroom. Um, and uh, Kira Jones is mentioning Psychgeist, which I'm not familiar with. Uh, and there, there have a bunch of good books in the works. That sounds cool. Um, Kira, if you want to tell us more about Psychgeist, I would be fascinated to hear. And yes, of course, uh, those of us who are largely on social media, uh, Adam, of course, his uh, his channel is Ludo History on Twitch or uh, or YouTube and uh, mine is Zilla's Athenaeum on YouTube or Zillable, which is syllable with a Z on Twitch. And uh, Hamish has a chapter on Hades, which has just come out uh, from DeGruiter. Um, you know, some of these books are behind paywalls, um, and, and academic books can be expensive, but one thing I want to encourage everybody to do is to reach out to academics. If you're interested in a subject, if you see the title of something, because we are almost always very happy to share. We're excited to tell you about it. So uh, so I do just want to encourage, like, if, if there is a money barrier in the way, just try reaching out to people. This works for indie game devs too, we've found. Uh, you know, they love to talk about their games. They love to talk about how they thought about the ancient world and building their games. Um, so, so don't be, don't be shy when it comes to Archaeo Gaming learning.
Absolutely. Talk to the indie developers. They'll give you the time because any publicity is good publicity. Um, but they also, you know, um, when uh, Heaven's Vault came out, I had a chance to interview the creators of Heaven's Vault and they talked and talked and talked and talked and talked. And it was amazing to get that, that uh, that level of, of access to the creative process for there. Plus the developer is Tim Engold's son. So that was awesome. Um, and then I see Dave Rudin's got something in the comments here about, yeah, I, my dad forbade me to play Leisure Suit Larry when it came out. He's like, not for your eyes. And he had it on his work computer. And if you haven't played it, you should find it and, and uh, and then turn it off really quick. But I, I don't know, from, from my perspective and, and using digital games as a teaching tool, um, it's always great to use it as a starting point. What did the developers get right? What did they get wrong about the ancient world? And it's, it's not different than talking about classical reception and, and books and films and stuff. It's just a different kind of medium, you know, with which to engage the material and the students. And you know, uh, I've got a neurodivergent daughter and she and I talk about video games all the time because of her hyper fixations and we work archaeology in there because that's where she's at. Um, she's not a reader, but, but you know, boy, how did she like games? So you know, we, we approach it from that. Um, and yeah, I'm sure others have comments about that too.
Yeah, I would echo that and say it's, it's very similar. It's just a matter of uh, what the sort of context around the creation of the piece of media is and sort of being on top of that. Like you have to know, okay, what is, how does historical fiction work, right? How do films work? How do games work? And then you're sort of just approaching the media. With that extra knowledge um, in mind, but I, I don't see it as, as radically different from any other type of reception study. Uh, for that matter, you just have to sort of be on top of kind of two fields at once. Um, and uh, be able to communicate the things that are important about whatever the thing that you're looking at is and get them to analyze that and consider that and think about it.
Uh, agreed. If I had to pick anything that's like different, it's, I mean, firstly, the interactivity, the act of playing is a little bit different and opens some doors for more practice based stuff, especially in a game like say, you know, Pentament, I made up this long without mentioning it, I've got to, where the mini games are actually like thinking about historical practice. Uh, and in some way attempting to simulate that. Uh, so there, there's some openings there. Um, but the other difference is just sheer density of information. Right? When it is in some way a fully rendered world, there's just a lot of people and a lot of stuff in that space. In a way, that's not true in historical films or uh, historical novels where there's a more exclusivity in, you know, I don't know, like uh, something like Napoleon might just cut, you know, several thousand miles of just walking. It, it, Napoleon, of course, well, now you're walking all that distance. And so there's, there's some differences there that shows up in just like the sheer density of stuff that is both an opportunity and a challenge sometimes. It's easy to get lost in the sauce, uh, with all that stuff, but once you do start to piece, that there's a lot more threads you can pull on than with some of the other historical media.
Yes, plus there's just the, the sheer immersive quality of games, which you know, is, you know, we, we go from text or, or photo to video and audio to actually interacting with it. And that interaction is just, it's the new level of being able to be in that history in some way to, to experience it. Um, and I think that's what attracts a lot of people to gaming in the end is the ability to to go new places, to experience new things. And um, the, the ability of games to take us into the past or into mythology to, to experience those firsthand, as it were. Um, I think that's really something we should be doing more work on as, as a, as like we as, you know, the institution of knowledge, whatever that means. Um, it's going to be a fruitful direction, I guess is what I'm trying to say.
One other thing that does definitely come up in the classroom and it relates to what Adam and Julie were just talking about, about interactivity and the sort of level of engagement, is that students will be far more willing to talk about video games than they will be anything else in my experience. Because they feel, because they've spent so much time immersed in them, they have a far greater degree of knowledge, like I've played a hundred hours of, of Assassin's Creed. So they, they have like a hundred hours worth of knowledge that they probably did not spend a hundred hours uh, worth of uh, reading the novel repeatedly or whatever, but they have seen game mechanics over and over again. So they're far more familiar with them and far more willing to discuss them in a classroom environment, which is fantastic for teaching with video games, I have to say.
Yeah. And there are even targeted uh, educational projects that can be done like this, with like sailing agencies. Which, you know, the game mechanics are everything we know about how trade worked in, in this particular place and time. Um, and getting to actually experience that as a trader on the ancient seas. It's, there's just so much there.
Yeah. By the way, well, to cycle back to a much earlier point, I did want to ask, has anyone tried experimenting with using like published demos? In classrooms as a solution to the cost and time investment? Cause games, right? The demo is from a industry perspective, supposed to sell the game, present that most polished early vertical moment of here that the game's about. Have they ever tried seeing how well that works with history? Or with the history within games?
I'll take that as a no, not yet.
Yeah, I don't tend to play demos myself or, or early access stuff actually, because I want to see the full game. So I, I haven't really gone into that, but like that, yeah, if it's, if it's accessible and freely available, then I certainly wouldn't like, yeah, no, that's absolutely something I think I'm going to mention as a possibility to my students, I would, I would say, next summer in my class.
Yeah, uh, right. But something that comes from just the live streaming side, right? Because every time Steam Next Fest rolls around, which is three times a year now, because there's just so many video games, uh, I try and pick up as many historical demos as I can and work through them. And I've been thinking over this like for a very long time and then completely forgot about it from the panel until just now.
What a, what a great idea and what a really valuable resource for learning about the games that are out there since um, you know, there's not exactly a, uh, an Archaeo Gamer's Digest.
There should be one of those though.
I, I would be for it.
Maybe that's a, a SASSA Archaeo Gaming space.
That's actually not impossible. Um, the one of our, one of our Archaeo Gaming Live folks is Alexander Vandewala of Pizomen, the blog and uh, archive of games with classical content. Um, so, so it's not impossible that we could get started on something like that. And if people would really enjoy seeing that, we can put effort into making sure that comes up sooner.
I've also spoken with Kate Miniti, who's also part of the, the Archaeo Gaming livestream team about um, potentially, and I don't know how we would go about this, but I would like to see some kind of database that uh, links historians to um, independent game developers, because I've interviewed some and they, some of them don't know that it's possible to approach um, historians or, or, you know, specialists. Um, or they don't really think to do that, or they just decide that, you know, they'll just do their own game because it's their own little game, you know? Um, and I'm just wondering if, if, I don't know, what, what do you guys think about that? Do you think that's a, a, a good idea? I kind of think that's a good, I think it's an awesome idea personally.
Yeah, this is something, oh, sorry, Hamish. I was going to say, this is something we were just talking about at IMC actually, because um, it is something that the Historical Games Network is sort of doing, but not in a very kind of database based fashion. Um, I've been to sort of a few of their events that have been quite good for, for putting in touch game developers with kind of academics a little bit, although something I found was, that was quite interesting about the last couple of those I went to was that sometimes their events nonetheless sort of split down, I would show up and there are a whole lot of game developers and very few academics, or a whole lot of academics, very few game developers. Um, but you know, they are, they have got contacts on both side, sides at least, so they might be someone to speak to about, you know, doing this further. But yeah, it's, as I say, it's something we were talking about at IMC as well as a possibly kind of useful resource. Um, but it, but you know, again, I mean, I, I hate to be the person who keeps doing this, but given the time of year and as many of you know, my personal struggles, this is a lot of extra unpaid work again, that we're kind of volunteering ourselves for or volunteering junior colleagues for or, you know, so that's one of the reasons why it maybe doesn't necessarily happen at the moment.
Yeah, this is also something that's on the radar for both games and film with antiquity and media studies. Um, but also see aforementioned issues with volunteer labor and academic societies, like it takes a long time for anything to get done as I know many of you, yeah.
Yeah, in terms, in terms of film, SASSA is already working on an archive uh, very much like that. So I think that in the future, we may see, as literally a volunteer organization, we may very well see that come under SASSA's purview. Um, we are now running up against the end of our time slot, much as I would like to keep chatting with you folks all day. Um, so let's go around and uh, have each of our experts say one thing that they would like to be able to do in Archaeo Gaming that they haven't gotten to do yet. I know I sprung that one on you.
Yeah, I know.
Please go for it, Andrew.
I got you. Um, the one thing, and, and if, if I ever publish again, this is what I want to do. Um, and I got called out on this for my first Archaeo Gaming book in 2018. One of the reviewers from Spain said, hey, you're not paying attention to the environmental cost of game creation, nor are you paying attention to labor. And they were right. Um, I would love to look at the environmental and labor impact of, of these games and, and it could be any video game or it could be, you know, games set in the ancient world or whatever, but, but uh, you know, I want to know what their environmental plans are. I want to know what the environmental impact is locally and globally on the creation of a AAA game versus an indie game. Um, and there's some work being done on this already. But I, I, I think at this stage of my career, I, I really need to do something that is, that has this kind of morality to it, um, where, where I feel like I'm contributing to the health of the planet as opposed to, you know, my CV or something. So um, I don't know, that's, that's what I'd like to do next, I think.
All right. They gave me an idea for, for something um, that uh, and I don't, like, it's such an open question. It's, it's great actually. It's like, it's very much like that, that chart on, I forget which page it is in Andrew's book, where it's just like, here's Archaeo Gaming. And it's so, there's so much stuff that when you put it on a slide, it's unreadable from the first row, like, so.
That, that was the point.
I love that you took it in that direction. What I think the thing that I would like to do in Archaeo Gaming is try to like change the way the field is or the subfield, sub-subfield is from my position of relative privilege as a permanent faculty member. Um, and I have no idea how to do that, especially unfortunately from New Zealand. It's a little bit tricky uh, to, to be a force of change when you're on the other side of the world from, from a lot of, a lot of stuff. Uh, but if anybody has ideas, then look me up online. If you Google Hamish Cameron VW, you'll find my email address. Or on Twitter or whatever.
For me, um, one thing that I had thought of recently was um, trying to bring Archaeo Gaming here to Egypt. Because we have all of these games about ancient Egypt, but I don't see any Egyptians talking about them, right? And I think it would be really amazing to have um, Archaeo gamers from Egypt talking about ancient Egyptian games because we're getting the Egyptian perspective. And I think that's something that's missing um, and needs to be uh, filled, but the problem is how do I get that here? Because there's the problem with resources, there's problem with getting funding. Um, and it's just, it's, it's, it's a whole mess. Um, but I would, I would love to see that happen.
Yeah, I guess I'll go next. Um,
Sorry, sorry. Brianna, um, I don't know if you've been in touch with Michael Carter. He's at Ryerson University in Cairo. Um, he has been doing some stuff with digital archaeology, uh, Egyptology and video games in the past few years. So if you look him up, he's in Cairo at Ryerson. He's an executive director there as head of program. Um, so maybe give him a buzz and you guys can cooperate.
That's great. Thank you so much, Andrew.
I'll, I'll, I'll type it into the chat. Uh, I'm sorry to interrupt Adam.
No, that, that's a great, great chat or great connection. Uh, uh, I mean, doubly so, so that actually dovetails into more generally what I'm want to do. But it's right now for me, it's all about, it's all about community, right? Uh, being in the weird spot of being on a smaller platform and being uh, one of the louder voices on that smaller platform. Uh, it's trying to do more to help build communities of people who are doing that work. Uh, and make sure that there's ways to make sure fans of one creator are able to be exposed and find that agreement with other creators. So, I mean, being on like SASSA live streams is always a great part of that, but there's a long, long ways to go with ever not enough time. Uh, but long term, that's, that's really what I want is to turn the public side of it and the content creation side of it into a more sustainable community, rather than a lot of voices individually doing their own thing.
All right. Any, any comments, Kate? Hmm. All right. Uh, we can, we can wrap it there. Uh, we are verging into social hour time. Uh, thank you all so much for coming. This has been an absolutely wonderful chat. Uh, I hope you all enjoyed it as much as I did. And with that, I will turn it over to David so we can move to our social hour.
Yep. Thanks everyone for joining us over the last two days. We've had a great time. Lots of discussion on uh, how people perceive their pasts and others' pasts. I hope you can join us in the social hour right now. To get the Zoom link, all you have to do is go to, uh, website, saveancientstudies.org, go to the virtual conference 2024 page, and you can find the RSVP and it'll send you the link to the Zoom right now. All right, I'm going to shut down the feed and head over to the social hour. Thank you for everyone in this session and all of our presenters and moderators the whole last two days.